All right, it is 7:30, so we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council from Monday, February 18th, 2019. I ask that you all please rise for the brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are ever mindful with somber hearts about the atrocious incidents that happened in our neighboring community last Friday. We certainly send our hearts and our blessings to the victims' families, and we just also want to publicly thank everybody involved and appreciate the special blessing that was showered upon all the men and women, including several from the Batavia Public Safety Agencies, who were active participants in the whole exercise that went down there. And we're just thankful that no more of our people were injured and hurt than was already the case, and that hopefully those involved are going to make speedy recoveries. It makes us ever mindful of the challenges that stand before us and the situations that can happen anyplace, and it makes us ever that much more thankful that we have at our disposal such talented individuals as we find in the public safety agencies that are in Batavia and in those communities that surround us. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from the community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them. As also, we want to remember those from our community who are sick or infirmed and are not able to be up and about. We just ask blessings be showered on them also. As always, we ask for direction into our vision and viewpoints and actions that we are going to take here tonight, and just ask that each alderman in their own hearts and minds does what they feel is in the best interest of the community of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings, and we also ask for a special blessing upon Batavia as we continue through this, what is turning into be a very active and, in many instances, somewhat of a troubling year. And we just ask that we are able to rise up and take it all on and do what we need to do to serve the better good for the world around us. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Serrone, you want to lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant Attorney Kirk, please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chansett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien. Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serrone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that we have 11 aldermen, or 12 aldermen here, and one on the phone, and one absent. I would ask for a motion, do we allow Alderman Callahan to attend the meeting? We don't need a motion?
Unless somebody wants to make a motion to attend the meeting.
Okay. All right, so we do have the necessary quorum then to conduct business. We will move then to item four, which is the meeting reminder that we ask everybody to please use the mics so that those watching on the television and out there can hear clearly what is being spoken of in the issues of business that are being discussed. Moving then to item number five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Atack, do you have anything?
I do not have anything this evening.
Anybody else? Okay, moving then to item number six, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Atack.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file committee of the whole minutes for January 15th, 2019. Building reports, January 2019. Approvals for February 8th, 2019. Payroll in the amount of $906,390.12. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,176,376.85. City council minutes for February 4th, 2019. Resolution 19-019-R authorizing execution of a one-year renewable contract with WA Management for 2019 East Side property maintenance. Ordinance 19-05 annexing and zoning parts of Main Street and Deer Path Road right-of-way. And resolution 19-012-R authorizing King County 2019 community development block grant application. I move that we approve the consent agendas presented.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the consent agendas presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved. All right, moving then for item number seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda, does anybody? I will note that in the back row back there is a longtime meeting attender and former EST official, Joe Essling. And Joe makes an annual trek down here to remind me and others around that tomorrow night is the annual Batavia Brotherhood banquet, it's over at the Emmanuel Lutheran Church at 6:30. And Joe and I are at least of the opinion that if somebody wanted to go to it, you could probably still walk up, and as long as you had the money in your pocket, you could buy a ticket and still go to it. This is the 50th year of it, and as you may remember, at our last meeting, we passed a resolution that I'm supposed to be there tomorrow night to read to the group. So I will not be at the Cow meeting tomorrow night, and that's where I will be. So I just wanted to let that report go out, so you know where I am. And again, if anybody's listening out there and forgot that the banquet is tomorrow night, I'm told that you probably can show up at the door, and as long as you got the $25. I think tickets are $25, aren't they, Joe?
Yes, I just forget.
Yeah, so it's $25 to get in, and then the money that's left over afterwards always goes to some worthy cause within the Batavia community. So it is a most worthwhile, and I think significant, and sacred evening in the life of Batavia on an annual basis. So I would certainly encourage anybody that wants to, they're certainly welcome to attend. Moving to item number eight then, is Main Street Report, and we have the Executive Director, Mr. Chris here. You want to make some comments for us?
Just a few things. Thank you for having me tonight. Wanted to talk about a meeting we held last week. We had a representative from the National Main Street Center come out and meet here at City Hall. Our board came in, we invited some people from the city, so we had city staff in here, business owners, property owners, kind of broke things down in different meetings throughout the day to gather some data and just talk about strategy for Main Street going forward this year. Excuse me. So to prepare for that, we did a community survey that we sent out for a couple weeks, and just kind of asked anybody from the general public to answer these questions, give us some ideas of what they thought about what was going on in downtown Batavia. We had 305 responses to the survey, a good number. Our representative told us that they've had cities much larger than ours that struggle to even get a handful of responses. She was very pleased to see 305 people. I was not surprised. This is the kind of community that people are very engaged in, so it really didn't shock me to see that, a pretty good response from this. Questions that were asked were some generalized things, your attitude and perception of downtown, the businesses that you patronize in downtown, what type of businesses would you desire to see in downtown, challenges that we face in the districts, what are your shopping habits, demographic stuff, where do you live, where do you work, age, that kind of stuff. We kind of went through, and one of the things was asked was what three words come to mind when you think about downtown Batavia? Some of the most common responses we got, pretty interesting, quaint was the number-one response, which I wasn't expecting, but it seems like it fits pretty well. Also, river, friendly, small, community, shop, restaurant, potential, and historic were all words that came up. Also, traffic, bridge, and limited. So, and not everything's positive, but we all knew those were in there too. I didn't even really need to say them. Also, which businesses do you patronize most often? The national chains came in at the top. Walgreens was number one. Also up there were Panera Bread and McDonald's, but also Batavia Creamery was, I think, the biggest of the local names that came in there. The Tea Tree, Gaetano's, Elsazon, Limestone, and the Library also came up very high, very common in those. So that was good to see, that it's not just the national chains, that sometimes Walgreens brings somebody to downtown, but they grab some tacos rather down here. So that kind of stuff works. What businesses would you like to see? Interesting. Brewery came up, pub, and restaurant, and entertainment came up, and coffee shop bakery. So all things that we have or are going to have in the near future. I think we're on the right track as far as that goes. Something interesting that I thought you all would like to hear, the 13 percent of the respondents said they lived in downtown Batavia, but when asked if they would live in downtown Batavia, if they could, 28 percent responded positively to that. So that does show that there is a desire for some downtown housing that people would like to see. Top three things that kind of came out, people wanted to see, dining and entertainment, apparel shops, and outdoor recreation. Those are the three things people want to do when they're in downtown Batavia. One thing that I found interesting was looking at some of the ESRAE data, we really kind of dove into those numbers. We looked at a five-minute drive within downtown Batavia, and what we found in there was the demand for retail is $316 million, is what that area, five-minute drive of downtown, supports. The supply is only $188 million. So we have a retail gap of nearly $128 million around downtown Batavia. When it comes down to food and drink, demand 35,764,000, supply 25 million. So we've got a $10 million retail gap in food and drink. And then clothing and accessories, gap is over 11 million. Food and beverage store, groceries and specialty, things like that, about a $19 million gap. So it shows that in all those hot sectors, there is some demand and some room for growth. That's just within a five-minute drive. When you expand the ESRAE data out to 10, 15 minutes, those numbers go up pretty strongly. So that does show that there's a lot of economy here in Batavia and the area to support some future growth for us. So there's a lot more that came out of that. I'm going to kind of tidy things up and send you guys all an email so you can dig through stuff on your own, but I just kind of wanted to hit the highlights of what came out of that last week. Couple things I want to mention. Next Monday is our Celebrate Success banquet, where we invite businesses from downtown. We give out some awards for volunteers and people that have helped us out, and all the great businesses that we support throughout the year. Hope to see you all there. Restaurant Madness coming up, that's going to be March 17th through 21st this year, so that planning has been kicked off, and looking forward to that. And one other thing I wanted to mention, Alderman Callahan, last week, I know he brought up the idea of the little shell of huts that Muskegon, Michigan is doing. Where's the can? There it is. I'm already, get well soon. We sat with staff last week, some of, a couple of my board, and Laura was there, Scott, and Chris Aiston kind of kicked around those ideas. I think there's some good ideas there, some progress to be made. Main Street's excited to be a partner with the city and to move forward in some planning on that front, so something else we're looking forward to. That's kind of it for me tonight, but one thing that our Board of Directors has decided this year is that we want to, we're asking board members to attend a meeting with me when we do these things each month, and just kind of introduce themselves, tell us what Main Street is and what they have to, what they see out of downtown Batavia, Batavia Main Street. So tonight, I have Tim Sullivan from Neighbors Magazine with me, and I'm just going to ask him to come up for a minute and introduce himself. Thanks.
On behalf of Neighbors Magazine's condolences to the victims, Aurora, and the many, many people that are affected by the tragedy. My wife and I have lived in Naperville for 21 years, and we just moved to Batavia in June. We are very glad to be here. Of all the communities that we work in and have magazines in, this is by far, and has been for a long time, our favorite community. So, neighbors of Batavia, we're in our 14th year of publishing, looking forward to keeping it going. And now that we're residents of Batavia, I am excited about getting involved in the community at a level that I have not been able to before. And my chosen path is participating with Main Street, joining the Main Street Board. So it will help me not only to get a better understanding of what makes the commerce part of downtown Batavia tick, but I think it will also help me provide and put out a better publication, understanding a little bit better what the people of Batavia need and look for and expect, or maybe perhaps is already here that they're not really aware of. So as we get a better pulse on that, I think we can put out a better magazine. So I'm proud to be a part of Main Street, excited about everything that Chris has put together. That meeting we had last week was great, so I'm all on board and ready to go. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate the continued good efforts of Main Street on so many fronts. I had the opportunity to sit in on the meeting that Chris referred to last Monday here with the National Main Street person, and it was a very enlightening conversation, and it was really good give and take by the board, I felt, and certainly brought to light, I think, the great potential that we have in downtown Batavia for enhancing things and furthering our causes and what's going on. And I, just this morning, I was out, and I had two different meetings, and I guess I can't say names yet because they're not ready to, but I talked to two existing businesses in Batavia who are actively having conversations about kind of moving locations, but also expanding their businesses, and they're, one of them in the downtown and another one nearby. So we've got a lot of activity, a lot of people are in here trying to talk about different ideas and different things, and so we're not lacking for conversation right now. So I'm very pleased that Batavia remains such a visible spot of activity, and we do have a lot of things going on here. And so we'll have, as they say in the Tonight Show, there's more to come, and in the next few weeks, I think we'll be announcing some interesting business developments that many people will look upon with great appreciation when they hear about what's going to be coming. So I'm excited about some stuff that we're going to be bringing into Batavia. Okay, moving then to item number nine, which is a motion to approve the acceptance of bids for the sale of property at 2150 Main Street. And Scott, you got this?
Yes, thank you. This is the property at 2150 Main Street. We had advertised this for sale per the direction of City Council. This is the property about an acre, a little over an acre, that's behind the Tower Carwash. And we did receive one bid within the deadline that was set of February 13th, and the bid was in the amount of $275,000. That is within the amount that we could accept under statute for the type of sale, land sale that we're doing here. And so we would recommend a motion to approve of the sale. We would have to sign a contract, and they would still have time, do their due diligence to put their use into play, but they're proposing a self-storage facility on the property. So we recommend moving ahead with this, that is permitted use in that district also.
So moved. Second? Moved by Brown, second by Wolf, that we accept a bid of $275,000. Now, I think there's a little history lesson that should go with this. And this is kind of alike along the lines, as I remember this story, because I was, I think, involved with this. When we bought, when we got sold Speedway Gas Station out there at Wilson and Kirk, we got $671,000 of this land we had been given by BP Gas, because they had bought the property originally for a nice price, and then decided, for whatever reason, they didn't think it was a corner that would work as a gas station. Somebody obviously was wrong in that thinking, because if you go out to Speedway and you see all the business that's going on out there, there's a lot of business there. But anyway, so they gave it, I remember I got the call from BP, and they said they had this land, and they just wanted to get it off their tax rolls, didn't want to pay taxes on it, so they'd give it to the city as long as we held it for two years before we resold it. So we did that, and met all the, so we turned it around, and we sold it, and we got, bid it, and we got, as I remember, it was $671,000.
Yeah, $635,000 less the transaction fees, yeah.
Yeah, transaction. So this piece of property is kind of in that same vein, although we're not quite getting that same amount of money. But this was a piece of ground that was kind of left over after Tangley Burke Stratton bought the Moore Farm out on Randall and Main Street to put in the jewel, and we put in the traffic signals and all the other things that started happening around there. And they sold the car wash, and they sold all the other lots in the subdivision, but this one was kind of back in the corner, so it wasn't high visibility, and nobody wanted it. So Tangley Burke Stratton held this for a while, and then one day, Tom Zum, who was with them, and Jim Kartheiser, who were the two guys that basically did most of the Batavia deals out there, called me and said, "Well, we've had a corporate decision that we really don't want to own this piece of property anymore, the taxes on it are pretty significant, so we'd like to yet give the city of Batavia this piece of property." So again, we brought it to the City Council, and the City Council says, "I guess we'll take it." So that one, as I remember, didn't have any conditions on it, it was just we had to wait for the right situation to go. So if you add up the two numbers, you know, we've now been given what turned out to be over $900,000 worth of property that we've been able, for nothing, that we've been able to turn around and sell for something that will generate some revenues. Speedway, I think, is a gold mine out there, but this one, I don't know what your return's going to be, but they'll be paying taxes on it, and there'll be revenue flowing out of it. And we got it for nothing, and we were able to sell it. So between the two, we had, we put about $900,000 plus in our pocket here for the city to use, and a lot of our projects that we've been doing in the downtown and other areas. I think it's good business, nobody can, I don't think, can criticize us for not being perceptive and visionary and seeing what we could do by, so if anybody else is out there and they got a piece of property, they like to give, I certainly would be happy to bring my phone and talk to them.
If I were real, I'd have my gold jacket by now, I think, for all this land sales we've done so far, so.
Alderman Brown, you want to make a comment?
I do want to make a comment, Your Honor, thank you, because I can remember both these properties when they came to us through the community development, with their discussion of the property owners that you just mentioned, and the discussions at the council at that time were, you know, a little bit, I wouldn't say controversial, but some good discussion, because we were in fact then at that time taking those properties off the tax roll, because they would have been now city-owned property. Of course, we don't pay property taxes on city-owned property. So the vision, as the mayor just mentioned, was, okay, well, we're taking them off the tax roll for hopefully a very small amount of time, in order to be able to not only get the revenue off of the property when we sell it, but also get it back on the tax roll with the property owner that we think would be beneficial to the city of Batavia. So I think in both cases, that conversation at the council at that time was good conversation, it was good to have, it turned out for the best, and I'm glad to see that it did. So as the mayor said, if anybody else has got any property they want to hand this way, give the mayor a call, because I won't be here.
You know, we took, as all of you know, we took a real hit here a year and a half ago when Sam's Club decided they were going to pull up reins and leave us. And that was a major strike at our sales tax revenues. But interestingly, because of the deal specifically involving Speedway out there, and then the Sierra Trading, and then the Dollar Tree Store, we've been able to make up a large portion of that lost revenue from Sam's by those three users. And that Speedway out there is a heavy-duty user with all the truck, gas that's being sold, and the big refreshment stand they got in there, and all the other stuff that they got going on in that place, they generate a lot of money. So that's been a good, helped us absorb some of that bad hit that we took when we lost Sam's Club. So I'm all for, as I say, trying to take on these abandoned pieces of property that nobody wants, finding somebody that turns around and says, "Well, I'll give you some serious money for this." So I think we still have a couple of things left, don't we?
Yeah, there's a couple. There's one in downtown here on Water Street, and then there's a lot in Brandywine. I think those are the last two major pieces that we have out there that are for sale, so, but, you know.
Water utility, hasn't water utility owned the piece on Main Street? The big piece?
Yeah, that one's, I think it's, we do the water-electric utility, one of those two own that piece.
That's a big piece of property.
Yeah, I, you know, I've had some discussions with some of our public workspeople, and their opinion, we should hold on to that. I don't know. I think that may be one that some night, at a Cow meeting, we ought to bring that down here and have a deep-seated discussion about what really is going to happen there. I mean, I'm certainly that people out in, you know, Alderman McFadden's ward would be very interested in that discussion, because the property is literally right across the street from McLean School there. And, I mean, it could be a lot of different things, and, you know, that probably should be part of the discussion as to what, if we were ever to sell it, what we would want, zoning we'd want to put onto it, to keep it in some type of favorable restrictions for the neighborhood there. So, but I agree, I think that could be another pretty valuable piece of property for the city to sell at some future time. So we need a vote, we need a vote then on the motion to accept the bid.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, no no's, one absent. Okay, moving to item number 10, which is Resolution 19-014-R, 2018 tax abatement. Who's got this one?
I have this. This is for the next four agenda items, and it is, they're all tax levy resolutions to abate the levy for bonds that the county automatically levies every year, and we must formally abate them. So we have, we're going to use, the purpose of the bonds and the revenue is to allow abatement for the following, and the total abatement for 2018 is $3,756,103.76. So we'll be using the revenue sources that I'm going to mention instead of the property tax, real estate taxes. So Resolution 19-14-R is to pay for the general avocation bonds for the fire station refunding, and we will use sales tax. So I move we approve this resolution.
Second?
Motion by Alderman Atack, second by somebody, Alderman McFadden. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I mentioned this at the Cow meeting, I'd like to mention it again. I think that this is something important, that we need the public to understand that in abating this, we're not adding this on to the property taxes, because if we left these bonds on there, they would not be subject to the cap, nor would they be added into that adjustment when we would be able to go in and raise taxes. So I think that this is really important, that we're not using property taxes to pay these, that we've aligned these with separate sources of revenue to pay these off. And one, the sales tax one, one that originally the public approved as an additional sales tax, and then we changed that into the home rule sales tax, so we could refine it and save money. So I think it's really important that people understand that, that that's something that we have done to try to keep our property taxes as low as we could.
And I think another thought I would have is, is that this is paying down the bonds that were issued to build the two new fire stations on East Wilson Street and West Main Street. And Peggy, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think we've never let any cost of that ever go on to the property tax. That's always been paid for by this fund, correct?
That's correct.
So the taxpayers, the property taxpayers of Batavia have never paid anything toward the two fire station buildings. And obviously, you know, we've got a really great public safety arena underneath us. I mean, the Fire Department just got an ISO Class 1 rating, which is probably going to have some impact on downward spiral of fire insurance premiums in Batavia. So we've been able to offer some relief to people on their fire insurance in many instances. At the same time, we haven't raised anybody's taxes by doing it. That's almost contrary, because you think you were going to make fire protection better, you're going to have to raise taxes. Well, because we came up with this idea, this was, I think, a real stroke of genius. I would point out that I recently had a question asked of me during the most recent referendum that all of us had some involvement in, asked to, you know, what was the city's position on this sales tax for these fire stations? And I said, "Well, the city's position was, is that we wanted to have this half..." Think it's a, this is a half cent, isn't it, sales tax? We wanted to have this half-cent sales tax, and so that we would then be in a position to pay off these bonds. And the community bought our argument, and we went to referendum to do this, this is again before home rule, the referendum on this particular bond issue. Now, you have to appreciate, I think a lot of it speaks to the goodwill that's enjoyed by the Batavia Fire Department, because, you know, most of the time when they show up, they're the good guys, and they got people when they're really down and needing help, and they're in there doing neat things to help people. This referendum passed almost 70% when, for this sales tax to do these fire stations. Now, I think the most recent referendum was almost 73%, so that's now kind of the top one. But this one was pretty good, that you pass a tax, some type of a tax referendum for 70% of the people in town voting for it. You know, it's saying something, that people understand what's really going on here and that you're trying to do something that's positive in favor of them not having to pay so much property tax. So, and that one, we do enjoy that lower property tax number that we talk about every year. Peggy does this presentation for us about it. You know, this, this stuff is one of the reasons that property tax is as low as it is, because we aren't putting this, you know, $3,756,000 onto the property tax that then goes to everybody. So, good stuff. So, I guess we need a roll call then on this one?
Yep. Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no no's, one absent. Okay, moving to Resolution 19-15-R, 2013 Geo Bonds for IEPA Refunding of Water and Sewer Revenue. Alderman Atack?
I move that we approve Resolution 15-R.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Meitzler. Any discussion on this one? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of Resolution 19-16-R. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Resolution 19-16-R is approved by a vote of thirteen yes, no no's, one absent. Moving to Resolution 19-17-R, 2017 Geo on Drainage and Capital Improvement, General Fund. Alderman Atack?
I move that we approve Resolution 19-17-R.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of Resolutions 19-17-R. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Resolution 19-17-R is approved. Thirteen yes, no no's, one absent. All right. That was a major savings on people's property taxes. Most people don't realize what we just did, but that was a, not a common thing in government today, that you see rebates of that magnitude anyplace. So, we should be pretty pleased, and I want to specifically cite Peggy Colby and those folks in the Finance Department, because under their watchful eye and direction, we've been able to do this. So, thanks to Peggy and her staff for, I think, a terrific job of managing the funds here and not getting us any trouble and getting, leading us to the position where we can abate $3,756,000 out of the tax roll. So, thank you very much. Okay, moving to 14, which is Approval to Waive Formal Bidding for Contract with CDW to Purchase Cisco Networking Equipment to Upgrade City's Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. Who's got this?
I do.
Alderman Chanset?
Your Honor, these two items are together, actually. So, last year, we did authorize combining the SCADA system for all three of our utilities onto one system. And for those that aren't familiar, the SCADA system is a thing that notifies us instantly whenever there's a problem on any one of the utilities. In committee, we discussed the reason we need to waive formal bidding is because the state of Illinois has a price set with CDW for these materials, and we found that we actually, by going outside of the state contract, we were able to save a significant amount of money. So, I would move that we waive formal bidding for this next item to authorize us to spend money on the equipment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Metzler, to waive formal bidding on the purchase of the networking equipment. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Motion to waive formal bidding is approved. Thirteen yes, no no's, one absent. Alderman Chanset?
So, then I would move that we approve Resolution 19-21-R, authorizing an amount not to exceed $98,680.57 for the purchase of the Cisco equipment, which I would like to note is, what, 50, 58? $58,000 less than what the state of Illinois contract was.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Meitzler, for the approval of Resolution 19-21-R, authorizing the purchase of $98,680.57 to purchase networking, Cisco networking equipment to upgrade the city's control and data acquisition. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Motion to waive formal bidding is approved. Thirteen yes, no no's, one absent. Alderman Chanset?
So, then I would move that we approve Resolution 19-21-R, authorizing an amount not to exceed $98,680.57 for the purchase of the Cisco equipment, which I would like to note is, what, 50, 58? $58,000 less than what the state of Illinois contract was.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Meitzler, for the approval of Resolution 19-21-R, authorizing the purchase of $98,680.57 to purchase networking, Cisco networking equipment to upgrade the city's control and data acquisition. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no no's, one absent. 15, the Administrator's Report. Laura?
Yes. So, on Tuesday, February 19th, we'll have our Committee of the Hall meeting, and that's at 7:00 PM. Wanted to give you an update, that the One Washington Place project will be coming back to Committee of the Hall on February 26th. That's next Tuesday evening. And there'll be three items that will require review and approval. The first is whether the city should move forward with the environmental remediation. The second is whether the city should authorize signing the environmental indemnification agreement. And the third is, should the city agree to a second amended and restated redevelopment agreement that's going to provide that the developer will do the actual remediation work, but be reimbursed for those costs by the city. I will get a memo associated with those items to you as soon as possible, so that you have the maximum amount of time to review the documents and the information in the memo. But I would definitely encourage you that if you do have any questions about that, to contact us, so that we can pull the information together for you prior to the meeting on the 26th. I'm glad that Chris stayed for the rest of this meeting, and at least so that I could, that he could be here when I say that the city really appreciates its association with Main Street. Last week, we had the opportunity to meet on four different items. Main Street invited us to be part of their conversation with the National Main Street Organization. They also came in to meet with our public safety staff, because when we host events on North River Street, there are some buildings that are located on the west side of the street, where they're only accessible to our emergency vehicles by a driveway that doesn't have any other entry point. And so, we were able to sit down and discuss with them about how to arrange future celebrations, so that the public safety still have access to those buildings. And then we also had meetings, you know, it was just last week that we were talking about the pop-up business chalets. And Chris and two members of his board came in to sit down and brainstorm about those ideas with us. And as well, we had a conversation, just real high level, talking about the fact that at one time, we had a business incubator program that had three, I'd say, successful graduate businesses from it. And so, we were kind of brainstorming ideas on how we might be able to accomplish that in the future. So, I thank Chris and all the members of Main Street for being an integral part of our economic development program here at the city of Batavia.
I have an office here now.
He does. He was here so much last week. We're like, let's just give him an office. Also, police and fire, we met with Bicycle Commission, and that was prompted by the discussion about the safety of bicycling on Prairie Street. And we talked about collaborating on a series of public service announcements, some videos that we would like to produce. As you recall, in 2017, we did some videos about using the pedestrian crossings. And so, now we'd like to focus on all three modes of transportation through our downtown, whether you're traveling as a pedestrian, whether you're traveling as a bicyclist, or whether you're traveling as a motorist, about how to do that safely and interact with the other modes of transportation as well. So, as things thaw out around here, we look forward to production of that. Probably you saw a, come up on social media, that our economic development website has been, the pages on our website have been updated. But a really cool thing that you'll find there are some case studies. And one of those case studies focuses on three different businesses located on North River Street, on the Woodneff, and the origin and success of those businesses. Another one focuses on a local business owner who transformed a historic building from near, nearly needing to be torn down into gorgeous, restored to its historic nature. And then the third is an existing Batavia business who needed to expand their business and rather than have to leave to find a bigger space, they actually decided to invest in more space right here in Batavia. So, all three of those case studies are available on the economic development website. And, you know, just this afternoon, we received another call from a business that is looking to and wanting to build 150,000-square-foot building here in the city of Batavia. And we're getting a lot of calls like that. Pretty soon, we're going to run out of spaces to build 150,000-square-foot buildings, but that'll be a good thing. We'll fill every space that we can. So, we'll hopefully be able to find an appropriate place for that. Target actually submitted building permits for an interior renovation of their space. And also, the Landmeyer-Winding Creek Annexation Agreement Public Hearing is scheduled for the February 26th Committee of the Hall meeting. And then it would go to City Council in March. Work continues on the Windmill Landing site. You recall, that's the other senior living community on Hawks Drive. Grading is underway, and the initial footing inspections will be done next week. So, here in the dead of winter, construction is still happening in the city of Batavia. Also, we'll be issuing permits for the Nagel Industrial Park spec buildings, once the permit fees have been submitted. And we continue to review permits with Metronet installations throughout the city, with three underground and three overhead permits in active review right now. The former Avenue Chevrolet and Raising Cane Development will have a public hearing on their proposal with the Plan Commission on February 20th. We've received plans for the replating of the Wilson Spewler parcel. You'll recall, that's a former site of a water tower, and that was purchased by Habitat for Humanity, that we'll be putting four homes on that lot. Also, we're having continued discussions with North Aurora about renewing our boundary agreement, and we're waiting for some feedback from them, and then we'll present that concept to City Council. The restaurants are coming along, both the Boca Ditos Restaurant, that is located at 109 East Wilson Street, the proposed Oak and Swine Restaurant at 107 East Wilson Street, and then also the Riverside Pizza Street, that's at 142 West Wilson, the old Walgreens location. And I think that's it, unless you've got any questions for me.
Any questions, Laura? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative. Okay, committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Laura just did a wonderful job of telling us everything that's going to be on the meeting, so I'm just going to, once again, remind everybody that tomorrow evening is the Committee of the Hall meeting. It starts at 7:00 PM. And then Wednesday is the Plan Commission meeting. That starts at 7:00 PM. Historic preservation is going to be next Monday at 5:30. And then the Committee of the Hall that we've got, the One Washington and the MI Development on, is going to be February 26th, and that's at 7:00 PM also.[1621.15] dollars, and that's going to be on March first at six PM at the Abbey Farms to, um, a fundraiser for the, the Flag Day Monument going in downtown.
And we'd like to encourage everybody that would like to come, come on down to that, I think it could be a very, number one, a very nice evening, but certainly a supportive, a very nice occasion that we're trying to put together to bring some very new and wondrous thing to our downtown and to the true meaning of history in Batavia that revolves around the American flag, and Alderman Callahan and a number of other local citizens are very, very diligently working on that to bring it around, and the idea being that they hope to have it ready to be under construction and finished in twenty twenty, so, uh, isn't that the date, Marty, I think in October, September, or June of twenty twenty?
Correct, Flag Day of twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. So, uh, please think about it, if you can come on that date, it would be most worthwhile, and I would encourage you to do so. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, um, I just want, under the mayor's report, I just wanna take a moment, uh, when you hang around here, I'm, as you know, I'm a, supposedly I'm a part-time employee, so I kinda come in and out all through the day, different times, and, um, I have the opportunity to run into different numbers of people, and certainly the department heads and the staff keep me somewhat informed of conversations and things that are happening and trends that are taking place, and I just wanted to share with you, and right now, there seems to be a trend is, we've got a lot of people wanting to move into Batavia, and where a lot of this movement is occurring is not yet in, we've approved almost five hundred new houses to be built between Wind Energy and Kirk and out, now soon out there behind the Coles and some other stuff that's already been in the works, there's about, gonna be about five hundred lots that'll be opened for something, and it sounds like some of this is gonna take off pretty quick, but the place that's very interesting to see who's buying in is in the older neighborhoods that surround downtown and both the east and the west sides, and it's, it's, it's all taking place in this housing, much of which is over one hundred years of age, and it seems to be that either the buyer is buying the house themselves and then coming in and doing the rehabs, or there's a whole little industry out there of house flippers that are waiting to grab any of this older housing stock that comes on, on the market, and then they turn around and the first thing to do is add a bigger kitchen and a couple of bathrooms, and then they immediately turn around and put this thing up for sale, and these places are selling with rap, rapid pace, and what's interesting is, uh, Jen up in the, uh, utility building tells me, she sometimes is able to ascertain from people, you know, where they're coming from and what their background is and whatever, and the three most common groups of folks that seem to be moving into Batavia right now by profession are schoolteachers, policemen, and firemen, and we've got several firemen I know right now have houses under remodeling in the older parts of the, of the community, and the same with the police, and the schoolteachers don't seem to be as much into remodeling, but they certainly seem to wanna move in here, and most of them are not Batavia teachers, they're a teacher someplace else, and the, the firemen that I'm aware are moving in here are not Batavia firemen, so you have to ask yourself, you know, we must be doing something right, because, you know, when you're a policeman or a fireman, number one, you're probably not gonna move your family into someplace that's dangerous, or there's crime rumbling rampant, or the place is gonna burn down, or, uh, they've done, they'll do their homework and they know where there's good stuff happening, and we seem to be one of those places that a lot of people are now wanting to get into, so you should all give, I think you should give yourselves a pat on the back that we're doing some stuff here that really is having a real positive synergy in what's gonna happen. Now, the next thing that's gonna happen of some interest is, is that on the fifteenth of March, at ten AM in the morning, Fermi National Accelerator is going to have the groundbreaking out there on the site for their new neutron accelerator project, and, you know, in round numbers, Fermi tells me they think there's gonna be about eighteen hundred construction jobs graded out there that will span over about a six-year period, and there's probably gonna be around two thousand new permanent jobs created once this thing is up and going, and the interesting thing about this is, is that much of it is being built with foreign investment, and we have a number of foreign countries that have come to the table and thrown serious money on here, and so I am told by some folks who have talked to some of these folks, there's a lot of folks in this foreign arena that are looking at Batavia specifically to maybe find a condo or something to buy where, uh, the country could buy, actually buy the condo, and then they could move scientists and physicists in here, and maybe they'll be here for nine months or a year, and then they'll move them out, and some other group of folks will move in. So there's probably a significant real estate market kind of hedging itself up for condo buying in Batavia, and I would suggest to you, that's one of the reasons we're seeing two hundred and forty-two of these things being built right out there at Wind Energy and Kirk right now, is that they're gonna be literally on the doorstep of Fermilab, and most of this construction that's gonna take place out there is going to be from the Pine, Pine Street entrance at Kirk Road going south to where the infamous bicycle trail goes up over Kirk Road and goes on the old Chicago Roar and Elgin Rightaway, which is the bicycle trail that meanders over into Roar and Naperville from that location. And so that's where this big construction is gonna take place, is right there on the west side of Fermilab, most of it's gonna take place right there, so, uh, we're gonna be a real hopping spot here, pretty quick, if nothing else, with construction workers, and one of the things I guess I would suggest to you is, if you start looking at what we're talking about here, what Laura talked about tonight as the, I'll call it the ethnicity of restaurant fare that's coming into Batavia, you know, we're getting some kind of foreign menus coming in here, and a lot of that, I think, is thinking it's gonna grab a bunch of this activity coming out of Fermilab, because where you're working at Fermilab, they will give you the map that shows you how you go up to the north end of the site, get on Wilson Street, and just come into this town, and you can find all these restaurants of various ethnicity and price ranges, et cetera, et cetera. So all this is a real spreading trend that's taking place in Batavia, and something that I, again, I don't think there's anything wrong with it, but it certainly is, is taking hold to what's happening in our town. And the final thing I would like to do is, is that in the last couple of weeks since we last met, uh, I've attended one, and I guess I'm going to another one on Friday, uh, we've had two former members of the City Council pass away, and the first one was Trudy Kramer, who was the wife of former Sheriff, uh, George Kramer, who for twenty-eight years, I believe it was, was a Batavia police officer and was juvenile officer and captain of the department in the fifties, sixties, and seventies before he eventually became elected King County Sheriff, and after he left town, his wife then got on the City Council, and she only stayed for, she filled in a vacancy that had been created, and so she only stayed, and then when it came time to run for reelection, uh, was the year that I was running my first time, and she told me, no offense to me, but she, she had, uh, eight kids and a family and a lot of grandchildren coming, and she didn't think she wanted to keep doing this, but what she took great pride in was the fact that she was on the City Council when the very controversial votes were taken to zone Randall Road for commercial activity, and as the last conversation I had with Trudy, she recalled to me about meetings that she sat in, we weren't in this room when she was here, we were down at the other end of the building, uh, or I guess we were next door here still in the old building, uh, and that people would come in and tell her, you know, you zoned Randall Road for commercial, this is gonna be the ruination of Batavia, uh, it'll kill the downtown, nobody's ever gonna be another storefront ever filled in downtown, and you're gonna have all these people coming in here and running traffic and making noise, and then they're all gonna leave, and you're gonna have a bunch of abandoned buildings out there, and this is just the ru, the ruination of Batavia, and it's gonna be bright lights as you look west out of Batavia, and it'll look like it's a sunset out there twenty-four hours a day. So she gave me this whole list of all this negativism that was out there espoused to it, and she says, "I took great pleasure, the last time I looked at the city budget, I opened that thing up and I saw that it had been identified in there that between over six million dollars of sales tax was now coming in to Batavia," and she says, "I remember the years I was on the City Council, the sales tax for the whole town was under five hundred thousand," and so she says, "Anybody that says that Randall Road didn't do some good made a bad judgment," and so she, she really, I think, left here pleased that she was here for taking all this hellfire and damnation from the folks that wanted to spew it at her, and at the end of the day, she felt very vindicated by what she had helped to espouse. The other one that recently passed away was, it was just the other day, was Alderman Ed Lamorte, who was fourth ward alderman, lived up on Elizabeth Street, and Ed by, uh, education was a librarian, and he had a lot of library experience, and so he was one of the kind of the whispers in the room, because when he was here, that was during the year when the Batavia Public Library was thinking about trying to do their expansion, as, I mean, if some of you may remember, there were several different versions of what should they or should they not do, and it went through, and then some of it got down here, and we had some heated discussions, and I don't know if Dave or Alan were here yet when that all was going down.
Yep.
But it was, it was heated.
From the outside.
And then we got into the days of, we're gonna tear down the beloved old high school and, and ruin that, and we're gonna build this library that nobody's gonna use, and blah, blah, blah. So Ed was always a big promoter of literature and libraries in town and had the passion for it, and so I remember him speaking very grandly about the visions of the Batavia Library and it should be done and all this good stuff, and so, uh, I think when he retired, he served two terms on the City Council, he was on it for eight years, and, uh, I guess it was the mid nineteen eighties is when he was here, it was just when all this library stuff was starting to kick in, and when, I remember the last thing he said to me when he went out the door, he says, "Jeff, keep focused on that library, that could be a real winner for Batavia." So, you know, as I think of Ed here today, and I was talking to George Sheets last week, and he's telling me that, uh, the annual daily attendance at the Batavia Library now is generally eight hundred and fifty patrons on the low end and over a thousand on the high end, and that's on a daily basis, so I would suggest to you that the library as it's currently situated up there has become kind of one of the major anchor tenants into the downtown, and it literally brings people from both sides of town, everybody's central to the downtown, and it matches up, I think, with, you know, some other things that have happened here that, uh, I've had rather recently, a couple of mayors visit me here, and we've gone out on tours, and they just ooh and ah by what they see. One of them had been up here on a Saturday and brought his wife in and saw the farmers' market on River Street, and couldn't say enough about what, how we had put this together and all the opportunities and businesses that were being offered over there, and a good time people were having, and the other one I had in here was very complimentary about what we've done around this building with the River Walk, and then all the stuff on Houston Street, and how we made Houston Street kind of a focal main, second main street in town where it's not necessarily business, but it's the street for the people, and it's the street where people come together and, you know, fraternize with each other and have parties and events and concerts and listen to music and walk across the bridge and admire the river, or stand over on the east bank and admire to this building, and going, you've heard me say this before, but Alderman Brown's father, uh, he deserves a huge amount for his take on buying this property down here, it, it started under his predecessor, Art Swanson, and then Mayor Brown was the one that really took it and carried it, and he took a whopping amount of opposition to this thing, that was gonna, again, it was gonna be the worst thing you ever did in Batavia, nobody was gonna use it, the building was gonna fall down, uh, you know, there was no end to the terrible things that were gonna happen here. You know, I'm not gonna name names, but I will tell you that there's other places relatively nearby here that have had to go out and build city halls, police stations, and all this other stuff, and they start telling me the money they're spending to do these things, and it's not unusual, you, they're in the twenty million dollar plus range for city halls and police stations and all this other stuff, and I would be the first one to tell you that we're not many years away when we're, Batavia's probably gonna have to do something to do some more work at the police station, because most of the guys are using that building pretty hard, I mean, it's getting used hard because of what's going on, but it's been a nice home for them, and I, hopefully, it can be redone or stuffed in the future, and we can keep them, but the beautiful part about everything we're doing here is, is that we're keeping all the city services, if you think about it, in the center part of the community, right near the river, so that now everybody comes and enjoys the river, then everybody comes down here for the, the events in the downtown, and now, you know, they're coming here to go to the library, because that's in the center of downtown. So if, one of the things that will be a legacy, I think, of this City Council and a few of you, few that went before you, is the fact that you really cemented in the viability and the, and the versatility and the success of downtown Batavia. This is not gonna be your old-fashioned dying dead downtown that people are gonna come back here and say, "Man, this place is dead." I mean, I've, I've hosted, and I, I think I've said this to you before too, I've hosted several class reunions here the last few years for Batavia High School graduates of either the fiftieth or the sixtieth class reunion, and repeatedly, without any exception, the thing I keep getting is, "My goodness gracious, what happened in this town?" And several people have said, "When we left here, this whole area through the downtown, this was a dump, I mean, this was fifty-five gallon drums and junk cars and piles of junk sitting here, and the river was not maintained, and, you know, it smelled, and it was all these things, and suddenly, what has happened here?" You know, it's, you've, you took a dump and turned it into a garden, was what one told me, and, you know, I think there's some, some actual truth in that, so, you know, I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but, you know, three of you are leaving us, or retiring, I guess, and I'm, I'm sorry to see all three of you go, but I, whenever all of us leave here, I think we can all hold our heads pretty high with pride that things that have been done here really are a major turning point in the history of Batavia, that we, and again, starting with Alderman Brown's father, and he gets a lot of credit, they took this old downtown and really did something special with it and made it into something that future generations, I think, will marvel at what was done here, and the fact that we still kept what the true essence of Batavia and the downtown and the friendliness of the community and the sense of community that goes with this, this is what really makes Batavia a unique place to live and wanna live, and I would suggest to you that it's, what is the ingredient that all these people who are now wanting to move in here, why are they coming? I think that ingredient of that sense of community is a big part of it, so I just wanted to publicly thank each and every one of you for all you've done, and I know you all have taken a bunch of negativisms from some people about certain ideas and whatever have you, but at the end of the day, I think we look pretty good. Alderman Brown, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move for adjournment.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman. Can Kirk take a voice vote?
All in favor?
Aye.